I want to call the meeting to order. Let me explain that prior going into form of comment, we will go into closed session as select board because we have some business that has to be taken care of that requires that and then we'll come back out and we'll open up and go into public comment and then down through the agenda, okay? So you might be here a little while and make yourself at home.
Where's the pizza?
So I'd like to enter a motion to enter in a non-public session for NHRS A 91 hyphen A 3 2 B and C. Roll call vote required. Second, selection Bugbee?
Yes.
Selection McCourage?
Yes.
Selection Brown. So. I'd like to enter a motion to seal the minutes from the non-public session. Second. Roll call votes required. Mr. Bugbee?
Yes.
Mr. McCourage?
Yes.
Mr. Brown? Yes. And now I move to enter or no, I'm gonna just, sorry. So we're gonna, we're gonna open for public comment. Anybody who wishes to address the board, just simply raise your hand, I'll recognize you and you come to the podium, please. State your name, state your address and say what you need to say. Mr. Banks, I saw your hand.
Jim Banks. Two things I want to bring up. The first one is the sign that's out in front of this building is aging. The material that the plastic lettering has been put on is aging out and it is less bright and white than it used to be. The church sign did the same thing about 10 years ago and when I replaced it, I used different material. I used baked enamel paint instead of white paint on wood and it doesn't age the same way. So I would like to be put down as a person volunteer to help when the sign replacement takes place. If you would do that, please. The second thing concerns the bidding of fuel, particularly bidding of propane. Last, or two times ago, I came and urged that we take the oil bids that we already had since there wasn't any real reason to rebid them. But the propane bid has not happened yet for the rebid and I'm told that the person that handles that does not have time right now to do it and I've not been given a time when that would happen. So it looks to me like there's three choices that we have. The first one is to put a date on it and get it done at that time, preferably a soon date. The second choice, I did the field bidding for well over a decade for the three institutions before Julie was hired. When she came here, she took over and now she does not have enough time to do it at the timeframe that I think it should be done in and I would be happy to take responsibility again for that as I had before. And the third choice is that we separate the institutions and let the town go its own way whatever timeframe it wants and the school and the church will take a different path. So that's a choice that needs to be made and I think we need to do it soon. Thank you.
All right, sir. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move into, we'll move into the agenda then. Bedrock Gardens Attorney Karen.
Good evening, everybody.
Howdy.
How are you? The, we're here looking for approval for our interim schedule. We're, our planning board site plan application is pending. We're back before the planning board on the 30th of this month and so while the planning board process is continuing, we would like to be approved for continued interim, interim schedule on interim basis while the, while planning board makes a decision. It's a schedule that resembles much of what has been previously approved. My client, to my knowledge, there have been no additional complaints since the ones in July, which we addressed before you. We believe this is sort of a reasonable combination while the planning board decides a final schedule. We're asking for approval so we don't have to come back in September from August 14th, which is tomorrow, through the end of October. We're asking for two private tours per day, 30 persons for each tour, Tuesday through Saturday, 9 to 5 and with onsite parking with those limited numbers. That's what has previously been approved by this board. We're asking for dusk hours for two private tours. I know you have a draft motion. If you were to fill in the motion, the dates for the, on part three, paragraph three for the dusk private tours, that would be September 22nd and October 6th. We're also asking for a public open house for August 25th from 9 to 5 with parking as was provided in the previous open house approval. I know in our previous approval, we were allowed one open house a month. In our schedule, proposed schedule, there's a gap. I think if we were to add an request for an open house in September would be just for one and it would be on the 15th of September. And then our biggest, our biggest event has traditionally been Columbus Day weekend and we're asking for Saturday, Sunday, and Monday from 9 to 5. It's a kid's sort of hobbit house festival, nature tours, and that's a big, that's the biggest event that my client does. I know you're familiar with my client's business. These uses that are proposed are agritourism, which they are allowed by right to conduct and they need these, they really need to stay open in order to stay alive and we ask you to consider these requirements. We think they're reasonable, we think they strike a balance while also allowing the planning board process to proceed. So and I'm happy, I know, I've spoken a lot to you over the months, so I'm happy to not speak and just listen and answer any questions you may have.
Okay, let's listen to Karen for her and see what your comments are then.
Hi, I just need to bring to your attention, I did receive two complaints from the July 21st event. There was a, Mr. Grumpling sent me a picture today of a car that was parked on the road for the open house event. Yes, they did move it, but it didn't get parked on the road. And also Jean Livermore and John Silva had a car turn around on their driveway, 44 High Road, that was looking for Bedrock Gardens. And also, just to let you, keep you guys posted, the planning board, yes, absolutely is reviewing the application. They are leaning towards, they, it has been discussed and several members were in agreement of no Sundays and no holidays. So just so you guys know where the planning board is at, it hasn't been voted on, but they have discussed no Sundays and no holidays.
When will it be voted on?
They have asked for a traffic study to be done. The next meeting is August 30th, but I don't foresee the traffic study has even, I don't even think it's started yet.
No, it was proposal for a traffic study on the scope of it, so that's what we're gonna submit to Karen on the 21st.
So, and then the traffic study is gonna take a while to be done, so I can't foresee this being approved before this, anytime before the September meeting.
I think that's probably right and one, in thinking that through, one reason I added the September 15 open house date is that may be a traffic study date and we're running out of time to do traffic studies. So that would be something that might help get the planning board information that it's, that's asked us to provide.
So I would say the earliest there'd be any approval would be October 1st. Wouldn't you agree? Traffic study's gonna take some time.
It depends. I mean, the, we're, we've talked with a traffic engineer who does most of the traffic studies around the states, the most respected engineer, and he's looking at what's a reasonable way to get the data without doing a massive expensive study that would be overkill. So that's what we're gonna share with Karen on the 21st. So I think Karen's timeframe is right. I'd love to have an answer by September, but you know, we, it's a, the planning board is doing a careful job and it's getting input from many people and it's been a sort of a conversation, it's been, anything else, it's been productive. So I'd love to have it September, but maybe October.
Comments, questions?
I have a question from Ms. Rossi.
The two things that you're talking about in terms of that happened on the 21st, do you consider those violations of those particular stipulations that we said that they could operate under?
Turning around in somebody's driveway?
Probably not.
No. Parking on the street, they did, they did correct the issue. You know, it's tough because we have a very strict sign ordinance, they can't put, no, they shouldn't put no parking signs up and down high road. They did correct it. Did it happen? Yes, they did correct it, it's, you know.
And our website, we did add to our website saying, respect our neighbors, respect our road, no turning around people's property, no parking on the street, so we tried to police it as best we could. I mean, tonight's the first time I've heard about it, it sounds like they were.
And I tried to print the picture, my printer wouldn't print it, I did send it to Ms. Glover and I do have it online.
I have also a question. Dusk changes depending on what time of the year and you're spreading over two or three months here. Can we maybe change dusk to something else, like a time?
Is it eight o'clock acceptable?
So you'd like to change it to eight o'clock?
If the board's looking for consistency, that might be able to make these.
I'm looking for something that we can say, okay, it's eight o'clock versus, well, what's dusk today?
It should be consistent with your planning board application, don't you think? And that's only one night later. Just because if you guys give them approval and then the planning board gives them less, you kind of would like to be consistent, I would think.
So, well, one of the reasons why I put my letters that the planning board has questions about Sundays, I didn't want one to be, you know, mom played against dad sort of scenario, so it's, it's, we did put one night to eight o'clock, that's right, so one of the keys of that, and that's a good suggestion.
I mean, just try to be consistent, makes it easier for everybody to follow and.
I have some, just some generic questions. You have that draft in front of you?
Yes, I do.
On the number one, you had said, what's the last possible date? You have August 14th as a start date, what would be a final date?
31st.
October 31st?
October 31st.
And then number two, you said Tuesday through Saturday?
Correct.
Number three, what day is a September 22nd?
A Saturday.
Saturday.
And October 6th is also Saturday.
And then the public open house is the 25th, because I saw that advertised, right? Anyways, August 25th.
August 25th and then just do incorporate my discussions about possible traffic study, we'd also look for an open house on September 15th.
Which is what day?
Saturday. That is Saturday also.
And the last one is, I can't go by Sunday, so I can't, I can't move on that one. Okay? I don't know, was there a split you considered?
Would we go Saturday, Monday?
Friday, Saturday.
Or Friday, Saturday, how's it Friday, Saturday? So that would be Friday, October 5 and Saturday, October 6 for that Columbus Day weekend.
I just wanted to read through the sand script, which I need, I don't exactly what we're talking about.
Well, it's hard to see. Well, we have to figure out when dusk is on September or whatever, it's much easier to see the time.
Well, it's just, yeah, it's the time is what we need.
And the time shape is more enforceable too.
Well, I think it's easier in Karen's office to deal with.
Yes, that time.
Ready for a motion?
No, I would like to hear if anybody else has anything we'd like to comment.
Okay. We're open for public comment on this subject. Anybody in the audience wish to? Chuck?
Chuck Cox, 36, Captain Smith Emerson Road in Lee. I've been watching this process for well over, I guess over a year. This has been going on and I think some of the problems we had with turning around in driveways and parking on the road is because things have not happened when they hoped they would have happened, that they would have the parking place and none of this would have shown up. And I'm feeling that from the standpoint of the lead master plan looking to encourage ag tourism and everything else, I think the town should do everything they can to encourage and help these things and not to get in the way and, you know, the planning board has come up with, oh, now we need to do a traffic study and, oh, we need to have a specific plan of what you're gonna plant to keep the sound and visual things out of the way and maybe it's what needs to happen, but it seems like it's a little more of a harassment and stuff that, that I'm hoping that the town would be more friendly and trying to have some good things happening in town. So I think that it's certainly right to have things done right, but I think there's also a place where you just try to nitpick every little thing and it drags everything out and it doesn't make for happy people anywhere.
Okay, thank you.
Hoping that things can move quickly and with good, yeah, with the right trust from all sides and I think the right people, I think are trying to do the right things by their neighbors and hopefully we can move things and that they can do some good things.
Okay, thank you, Chuck. Anybody else? Okay, so I'd like to move to approve the following activities of Bedrock Gardens during the period when it is actively and in good faith pursuing, planning and zoning board approvals. One, the approval is granted for the time period between August 14th and October 31st until the planning zoning board approval has been granted. Two, up to two private tours per day, if no more than 30 persons each, held on Tuesday through Saturday between the hours of 9 and 5, all parking shall be onsite. Three, on September Saturday 22nd, 2018, and October Saturday 6th, 2018, private tours shall be between 9 a.m. and 8 p.m. Four, one public open house may be scheduled for August 25th, 2018, and September 15th, 2018, between the hours of 9 a.m. and 5 p.m. Parking to be onsite or in school lot with a shuttle between the school and Bedrock Gardens. Five, three public open house days during the hours. I'm sorry?
Sorry, change to two. Sorry. Two dates.
What, I'm sorry, you got me going here.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. My fault. This is now two, because we have changed me to.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Okay, item five, two public open house days during the hours 9 a.m. to 5 p.m. May be scheduled for Columbus Day weekend, October 5th and 6th. For any and all events, the following conditions apply, no parking on high road, no idling buses onsite or at school lot except to pick up and discharge passengers. A train parking attendant or police detail will be onsite at all times that Bedrock Gardens is open. Failure to abide by the above conditions shall result in revocation of approval. Second.
I have a question. Can I just clarify, can I just, clarification on Saturn, on September 22nd and October 6th, the private tours shall be between 9 and 8, but that doesn't increase the number of people, it's still 60 total for that day, correct?
Correct, yes.
So the only day that there'll be more than 60 people there in a day is the two public open houses?
And the ferry house festival.
And the ferry house festival?
Yes.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Will you take one change in item number one? You said August 14th and October 31st, can you clarify, that's 2018?
It's 2018.
Just to be clear?
Yes.
In terms of those particular.
Okay, so that's for, it's granted for time period between August 14th, 2018, and October 31st, 2018.
Acceptable. President.
We agree?
We agree.
Okay, so vote, selection Bugbee? Can we just tie?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good luck. See you.
Let's hope it doesn't rain.
Really? I don't know anything about it. I don't know anything about it.
Oh, yes.
Oh, oh, I don't know like that.
You should, yeah, just go that way and then go straight and then take another one.
Those I know. I just didn't know anything about the other.
Okay, please.
All right, so we have amongst us now a couple who have been in the town for many, many, many years and have contributed time, effort, and certainly a lot of intelligence to various, various interests that the town has had, various projects. I'm talking certainly about the Meekers. David and Sharon, we certainly know that Sharon is not meek, so we, we'll go ahead and consider her a meeker. You know that, don't you? Yes, you do. They are, they are relocating and will be moving out of the town of Lee, although they'll, they'll still be, have a presence, I'm sure, for the town of Lee. There's a whole list of things that they have done over the years, I don't have a list, but I know Sharon's been very active in the energy committee and very active for Lambtree River Projects and so on and we're gonna, we're gonna miss them a lot because we are always looking for people to help, help and contribute to the, to the future of Lee and they do that and they do it very well. So we have to present to you, please come up.
State your name and address.
Right now, you want to do it, I see. Photo ID. Give them the certificates.
Come on, you can do it.
You want to be in front?
No.
You want to be down here? Come on, rain.
So, we express our sincere appreciation to Sharon Meeker for her years of dedication and loyal service to the town of Lee and we really do.
Thank you very much.
David, the lifetime achievement award for 35 years of devoted and distinguished commitment to building a stronger town through volunteer service. We thank you very much. We're gonna miss you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Yes, we are.
So your wife's name is on here, so we decided we probably have to put your name on as well. So the board has voted to make David Meeker the lifetime volunteer award for the 2018.
Wow.
So this will be heading up in.
There we are.
Yep. Just remember, she came before you.
Story of my life. So congratulations.
Congratulations.
Well, he's my favorite volunteer. Managing volunteers for 50 years, so he's my favorite.
Okay, we're not done yet. Not done yet.
Please don't listen.
Oh, no.
Oh my gosh. Oh, you should see the condition of our house. Oh, how much this is appreciated. That's so beautiful. Look at that. Thank you and thanks to all of you, your best friends and supporters. I don't think I've tried to do anything in the town that I didn't have significant support from many of you and I didn't always succeed, but I had the pleasure of working with wonderful people and whatever I was working with and the, one thing I really wished could have gotten done is that one of Dick's.
Wyrick.
Dick Wyrick's, Dick Wyrick's plans and wishes for additional trails in the town could have gotten done and I have to thank Evan and Joan especially because they took slow walking me on Tibbetts Road and pointed out all the historic features and though there wasn't a trail there, there might be able to be one which would connect the town of Lee with the trails, I believe in Barrington and they have hundreds of trails and you could just walk all over once we got that connection made. But I, you notice I still say we, I still feel like I live here and I, even though I really am not living, the living is over. We're existing, you know, and hoping to, hoping to come back, at least for the fair. So anyhow, thank you all.
Oh, well, you're still not done. You have, whoa, here.
I got it.
You got it?
Oh, we're gonna leak it.
Sharon has one of these, so you have to have one too. So this is your little trophy, there's some hardware to put on the mantle, so.
Thank you.
So congratulations, here we go.
A little shake.
I'll enjoy this, Sharon, but I want to thank you. It's been, it's been so great to, I'm the Conservation Commission, where, I'm sorry, I never learned really to tell the difference between a pine tree and a hemlock, but I was able to spend a lot of time writing down and keeping the records of the people who really do things in the Conservation Commission, which has been a great group and the Heritage Commission. You folks do so much to make this town the town that it is, thank you all.
Now, all the time both of us were talking, we were not facing you all and I think I've said it a few times before, but I have never worked with a staff so helpful and cooperative and leaders like you all, really were very supportive in just about everything I've tried to do. Like I said, I didn't accomplish it all, so that's why we need more people to come in and start doing the interesting things that I got to do and that Dave got to do. So thank you.
Thank you all. Thanks again.
We have one more thing to give out. Oh, you can stay or you can go, it's up to you. the changes that I made here are just to address that desire of the board. So, I don't know whether anybody has any questions relative to those recommended changes?
Comments, some, which is structural grammatical. One is something is prohibited, it should be a two for carry-on, carry-out, right, you jumped on it?
Oh, yeah, sometimes when I...
Just a structural type of issue at that point.
And then the numbers change all the way down.
And all the numbers have changed all the way down.
Yep.
And then I had a question for the Chief of Police on item nine, which is really what item 10, you know, no alcoholic beverages, profanity, objection language, and/or disorderly conduct. Does that include nudity as well?
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure it does.
Yeah, I mean, that would come under disorderly conduct.
Okay.
Disorderly conduct is like a catch-all.
So this, covers all those particular areas.
Yep.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
And then whatever level it is, and depending who's around, then it goes into indecent exposure and on from there.
Okay, thank you.
Can I clear? But people can be topless, though. State law allows that.
Well, as long as it's not offensive to the people that are around them.
Really?
But who makes the call?
Well, it's gonna have to be, again, you know, we'd get called down, and we'd have to assess the situation, look at the totality of everything, if there are children around, you know, what is the reason if it's just for a reason, so we have to look at everything when we deal with that.
So Hampton Beach does that too? It's my understanding they just do it.
Yeah, I don't know how they did it, and I'm hoping it's never a problem here.
I don't want us to be like the poster child to have, because...
We don't walk in and just arrest somebody. We never, we never do that. We assess it, and we research it, and you know, unless somebody's, you know, causing a felony in front of us, we don't jump right into an arrest, we discuss with our county attorney, make sure that we have everything that we need, and then we do a warrant and arrest after.
Julie, one other thing, is there any issue with smoking in the Pavilion or anything?
That was never brought up before.
That was never brought up. I've never heard that there's ever been any issue with it.
I just want to make sure we're clear on everything. No, those are the things I had, the rest of the changes look good. I didn't have anything, Scott, anything else?
Okay. Then, then the next discussion that the board had indicated that they wanted to have was whether you want to change the usage rates for Little River Park, the baseball field, the multipurpose field, I suppose the Town Field. We had already discussed Stevens Field, and a change was made to that. We now have a two-tiered system, if you will, between the rates and then what we're calling the nonprofit rate, so that would be rates for nonprofit organizations. So I guess that the board had wanted to take some more time to consider what they may want to do with the rest of the rates.
With my understanding that Mr. Colton is coming back to us.
Mm-hmm, I believe he is. He's in the audience.
Well, he hasn't come back to us yet, he's in the room, but I don't know if he wants to speak to that. Yes, ma'am.
Are we speaking about the rates yet?
Yes, just started.
Okay. I just, I've done a lot of research on the various fees around different towns, and Matt and I are in disagreement about what the fee should be. The fees now are $100 per the big multipurpose field, per hour. They were 35 a game, which averages out to roughly 25 to 35 an hour, depending on the length of a game. I think going from that to $100 an hour is a bit much. Depending on the length of the game, it's anywhere from a 300% to a 400% increase in fees. The fee rate that was chosen is basically the fee rate for Exeter Phillips Academy, which I'm not sure that's something that I would compare. I talked to Brentwood Recreation today and to ask them, basically, you know, what condition are your fields in, because we have a great field, and of course he thought his field was in great condition too, but they charge a flat fee, $25 per hour, whether it's for practice, for a game, or whatever. The Town of Kingston has two rates, $60 rate for non-residents per hour, per game, and the same thing for practices, but they have a residents' rate. Now, Matt pointed out to me, we discussed some of this this morning, that I'm not sure we can go with a residents' rate for somebody like Maximum Velocity, because he's a resident, but that doesn't mean everybody on the team is a resident. The rates in Concord were weird, $44 for two hours, so, and one of the fields that has been played on is Portsmouth Christian Academy, and their rates are per game, $30 per game for the, I forget these things, is that U-11 and U-12?
11 to 11.
11, 11, and, and the small field is for the younger kids, is only $15 per game, and that averages out to $15 and $20 an hour, so I can't get there to $100 per hour, and that's just information I've collected, and Sandown also has rates, resident and non-resident, and I'm using my memory now, and it's either 50 or 60 for non-resident and half that for resident rates, so that's my feeling.
Anyone else, any comments?
Eric Knoburg, Chairman of the Recreation Commission. Thank you, Annette, for all of your research, great job. I guess with regard to the rates, and I have to take responsibility for not being as attentive to it when they first came through, but they were kind of lumped together with a bunch of other stuff. I'd like to draw your attention back to the Select Board meeting, minutes of March 12th, 2018, paragraph three. Matt Gloot, ORYA Director, has presented some changes to the field usage request form that Lee uses with regard to fees in order to recoup some of the cost and avoid some issues that they had last year. There are no concerns with his recommended, recommended changes. The Town Administrator will bring final version of the MOU to the next meeting for the board's signature. Mr. Gloot states the recommended fees are either in line with or a lot cheaper than other local options. The primary reason for this change is that certain groups were benefiting from the way it was structured last year. This new structure will be fair and will help recoup more of the cost for maintaining the gorgeous facility that Lee currently is located in Little River Park. I think I have some issues with what was presented there, and one, the fees that come from that don't go towards the maintenance of the fields. Those fees go into the Recreation Commission revolving account, which is used for things such as the music this year that we were able to present. And I'm concerned that where these numbers came from for this fee hike, as large as it is, we don't have a lot of groups using the fields. I believe we only had one other group, which was Maximum Velocity, and then there was another group too, Josh.
Seaford United.
All right, United, and my understanding is that they're not using the field this And in the comment that the primary reason for this change is that certain groups are benefiting from the way it was structured last year, there's no clarification of what certain groups, which concerns me. It sounds a little discriminatory that we're trying to keep others from using our facilities, that's the way it appears in this paragraph. In April, when I had a discussion with the Town Administrator regarding the, regarding the Recreation Commission vote to sponsor Maximum Velocity, it was alluded that there were some issues with Maximum Velocity. It was never specifically said what, but that didn't set well with me. Is there a problem with Maximum Velocity? If there is a problem, be it anything, I mean, I don't know of them having any particular issues, ethical or anything else, or with coaches, I don't know of that, we have no history, the members of the Recreation Commission have no history. If there is, if there is a problem with Maximum Velocity, I believe it should be put on the table here and now, if that's what this is about, because that's what this appears to be. And then it says the new structure will be fair and will help recoup more of the cost maintaining the facility, which I already addressed. I don't know how that's more fair by jacking 300% to 400% increase. So, we are meeting tomorrow night, the Recreation Commission, to talk about scheduling and things like that between ORYA and Maximum Velocity, but I, I think that this Select Board ought to reconsider the rates, at least for the remainder of the season, until we get a new, a new structure in place that we can spend some more time with and understand better. And my, my suggestion would be to roll it back to last year's rates, and then, and then readdress it for next year, but allow Maximum Velocity to have the ability to use the fields at a reasonable rate rather than having them to come up with an exorbitant fee.
I got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I understand where you're going, I just want to take a little bit farther. Are you telling me you're gonna make formal recommendations to the board in the future about...
Well, I thought that that was part of what we had discussed last year, and that the Select Board had directed us to be more involved in that. Now, yes, I did get correspondence, but it was, and my feeling is it was more after the fact that this is kind of a done deal, and true, I should have been more attentive to that, but I wasn't at that point in time. We would like to be at the table from the beginning on that discussion, not, well, here it is, you know, what, what changes do you have, but we were never involved in the original discussion with that. It was just, here's the, here's the MOU, you look at it, what changes would you make? I think that as a Recreation Commission, we ought to be much more involved from the ground floor up with regard to that.
And I agree, I'm just pushing the issue. If you're gonna say you're gonna do it, I want to, I would like you to do it.
Well, we'd be happy to do it, I mean, that's not a problem. It's just that, you know, timing and everything else, I mean, we've been wanting to address this issue for a while, we've been talking about it. Unfortunately, our meeting that was scheduled for the first Tuesday couldn't be had because we didn't have a quorum, so that's why it's being put off till tomorrow. I mean, I, I don't really want to see this can get kicked down the road much farther, it's not fair to Maximum Velocity or anybody else, and I think, I would strongly urge the Select Board to, to make a decision tonight and recommend that you roll the rates back to what it was last year.
Why don't, why don't you just come back at us with a recommended fee structure that you feel is right? I mean, we can come up with another fee structure, or just say, yes, we'll just go back to, you know, whatever number it is, but...
That would be controversial.
If you're gonna have a meeting tomorrow night...
Right.
With the Commission, why don't, why don't you sit down and come up with a fee structure, recommended fee structure?
We can certainly do that.
Since you had just told me that the funds that are generated on this goes back to the Recreation Commission to do more unique things within the Town of Lee. It doesn't go towards maintenance, that's what you said.
No, it doesn't go towards maintenance, it goes to the revolving fund, our revolving fund.
You are aware that, that the last meeting, we gave them a special rate for Stevens Field?
I, I understand, I understand that, I mean, I'm just throwing that into the mix, that would be a suggestion.
And we're waiting for him to come back and talk to us about the, using the Little River Park fields as well, but he needed this to move forward with his operation, so...
Well, I think, I, I'm just here to address the fee structure issue, not scheduling or anything else, because we haven't had a chance to sit down with all parties and see what's what, and that's tomorrow night's meeting.
I would recommend we just do a clean sheet, let him come back with a recommendation for the fee structure for the, we don't need anyone to look at.
So what's in place now is what's there, with the special thing for Stevens Field, my understanding?
That's what's in place now.
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess you have a response to it?
I guess I do. Thank you.
So I think we're at the Lee Church property purchase and line, line adjustment?
Well, no, I, well, I was gonna go back up to Tamarack Road.
Oh, okay, Tamarack Road Fire, okay, Fire Pond bid results.
As you may recall, we ended up putting out two bids for the Fire Pond, James Farm, you'll get to a previous meeting, and that work has actually started, so now I'm here to present the bids that we received for the Tamarack Road Fire Pond.
All right, United. And my understanding is that they're not using the field this year. And in the comment that the primary reason for this change is that certain groups are benefiting from the way it was structured last year, there's no clarification of what certain groups, which concerns me. It sounds a little discriminatory that we're trying to keep others from using our facilities. That's the way it appears in this paragraph. In April, when I had a discussion with the town administrator regarding the Recreation's Commission vote to sponsor maximum velocity, it was alluded that there were some issues with maximum velocity. Was never specifically said what, but that didn't set well with me. Is there a problem with maximum velocity? If there is a problem, be it anything. I mean, I don't know of them having any particular issues, ethical or anything else or with coaches. I don't know of that. We have no history, the members of the Recreation Commission have no history. If there is a problem with maximum velocity, I believe it should be put on the table here and now, if that's what this is about. Because that's what this appears to be. And then it says the new structure will be fair and will help recoup more of the cost maintaining the facility, which I already addressed. I don't know how that's more fair by jacking three to four hundred percent increase. So we are meeting tomorrow night, the Recreation Commission, to talk about scheduling and things like that between ORYA and maximum velocity. But I think that this Select Board ought to reconsider the rates, at least for the remainder of the season, until we get a new structure in place that we can spend some more time with and understand better. And my suggestion would be to roll it back to last year's rates and then readdress it for next year. But allow maximum velocity to have the ability to use the fields at a reasonable rate rather than having them to come up with an exorbitant fee.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
I understand where you're going. I just want to take a little bit farther. Are you telling me you're going to make formal recommendations to the board in the future about...
Well, I thought that that was part of what we had discussed last year and that the Select Board had directed us to be more involved in that. Now, yes, I did get correspondence, but it was, my feeling is it was more after the fact that this is kind of a done deal. And true, I should have been more attentive to that, but I wasn't at that point in time. We would like to be at the table from the beginning on that discussion, not, well, here it is, you know, what changes do you have? Well, we were never involved in the original discussion with that. It was just, here's the MOU, you look at it, what changes would you make? I think that as a Recreation Commission, we ought to be much more involved from the ground floor up with regard to that.
And I agree. I'm just pushing the issue. If you're going to say you're going to do it, I want to, I would like you to do it.
Well, we'd be happy to do it. I mean, that's not a problem. It's just that, you know, timing and everything else. I mean, we've been wanting to address this issue for a while. We've been talking about it. Unfortunately, our meeting that was scheduled for the first Tuesday couldn't be had because we didn't have a quorum. So that's why it's being put off till tomorrow. I mean, I don't really want to see this can get kicked down the road much farther. It's not fair to maximum velocity or anybody else. And I think, I would strongly urge the Select Board to make a decision tonight and recommend that you roll the rates back to what it was last year.
Why don't you just come back at us with a recommended fee structure that you feel is right? I mean, we can come up with another fee structure or just say, yes, we'll just go back to, you know, whatever number it is, but...
That would be controversial.
If you're going to have a meeting tomorrow night
Right.
With the Commission, why don't you sit down and come up with a fee structure, recommended fee structure?
We can certainly do that.
Since you had just told me that the funds that are generated on this goes back to the Recreation Commission to do more unique things within the town of Lee. It doesn't go towards maintenance, that's what you said.
No, it doesn't go towards maintenance. It goes under the revolving fund, our revolving fund.
You are aware that the last meeting, we gave them a special rate for Stevens Field?
I understand that. I mean, I'm just throwing that into the mix that would be a suggestion.
And we're ready for him to come back and talk to us about using the River Park fields as well. But he needed this to move forward with his operation, so...
Well, I think, I'm just here to address the fee structure issue, not scheduling or anything else, because we haven't had a chance to sit down with all parties and see what's what, and that's tomorrow night's meeting.
I would recommend we just do a clean sheet, let him come back with a recommendation for the fee structure for the opening, look at it.
So what's in place now is what's there with the special thing for Stevens Field? My understanding is that...
That's what's in place now.
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess you have a response to it?
I guess I do. Thank you.
I think we're at the Lee Church property purchase and lot line adjustment.
Well, no, I was going to go back up to Tamarack Road.
Oh, okay. Tamarack Road Fire, okay. Fire pond bid results.
As you may recall, we ended up putting out two bids for the fire pond, James Farm. You'll get to a previous meeting, that work has actually started. So now I'm here to present the bids that we received for the Tamarack Road fire ponds and to ask for the board's approval to execute a contract with Hall's excavation for the project.
I have no problem with that. It looks pretty good.
So I moved to contract with Hall's excavation to make improvement to the Tamarack Road Fire Pond for a amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand. Second? Got to reset this. All in favor?
Aye.
He's got the gavel.
Next item is the La Valley-Brenzinger Architect Agreement for the schematic design for the facility project. A copy of the, I met with Mr. Robicek and Kathleen Porter and then have had a couple of phone conversations with them and email exchanges relative to the agreement. I had some questions. It was sent to the TCVC for their input, so I believe that that's been all incorporated into this document. It does still have to be reviewed at some higher level at La Valley-Brenzinger, so, but this is the document that's been presented to us. I wasn't told of any particular issues that they might have at the higher level, except for we had stated in the RFP that we would own the documents. And I think that that's actually very important, that we feel paying for the documents, that we are owning the documents of the entire project. So I wondered whether you had any questions relative to the contract agreement?
Excuse me, John?
I do have a question. John Tapna, member of the TCVC. And I had come to the town administrator and asked about the preparation of drawings of the buildings as they exist now. And my understanding was that that was all worked out, that the architect was going to take whatever it was that we had, that they would do some spot checks of dimensions as they saw fit. And the CAD drawings that they would produce for the preliminary designs would be based on that, meaning that because they're not necessarily as accurate as they would have been if they had used the usual procedure of measuring those buildings. I'm noticing now on three, the owner will provide the following relevant documents to the LBA, PDF scanned drawings, site and building plans of the existing town buildings included in the study. So the question is, is La Valley aware of the very limited number of drawings and quality of the drawings that we have? And is that acceptable to them or they...
Yes. That's one of the things that we talked about when we met, and they've looked at all of the documents that we have online. I think I gave them some additional ones that I may have uncovered that I didn't see on our website. But they're satisfied that with the documents that they have available to them and doing the spot measurements, that they will be able to produce CAD drawings from that on a schematic level. As you and I both talked about, it would be, in particular for the library, thousands of dollars to have someone come in and do the laser measurements. If we proceed with the project to the construction phase, that is something that's obviously going to have to be done.
Correct. I just wasn't sure that they, the way that was written, that they knew the limited...
They do.
One other question, and I'm having a hard time finding where, was they said that it includes ten meetings and that additional meetings would be billed at the hourly rates listed. But there's another part in the table where it says additional meetings are nine hundred dollars. So not sure which applies.
I'm sorry, you said you saw somewhere where it said they'd be billed at an hourly rate?
Yes.
Yeah, it should be the nine hundred dollars that they have in the schedule.
It's on this, on the optional services in the table.
The table says nine hundred dollars.
Right. I believe it's nine hundred dollars per meeting, but that does not, the ten meetings does not include the programming meetings. Those are separate from the ten meetings.
Those are the handles, those two.
In terms of the issues that came from the TCVC, Kathleen Porter's services will be included?
Yes.
And the other thing, in terms of the point person, that needs to be determined because the TCVC thinks it should be them. I don't have any problem. I don't know if the rest of the committee has any problem, but if you wanted to designate the town administrator to be the administrative contact, I don't have any problem with that. But in terms of any design questions, they should come to us because I think that's, oh, I personally think that's...
Especially if it has cost implications.
Well, I would...
I would actually, let me clarify. I understand the town administrator for administration at this point, but also if there's any modifications to designs, I think it has come back to the board and Select Board.
In terms of...
Well, all of a sudden, let's state that the highway department says, you know, it's scheduled for somebody's square feet, but now we've got to make a major change. I want them to come back in front of the board and select.
In terms of the highway department?
Well, just using the example.
Some particular...
Yeah. A square footage change or something along that line. So if there's things that could affect different people within the group, I think it's got to come back, so the board can deal with those particular issues.
Yeah, because the TCVC, they're just asking to be the point person for the day-to-day stuff that's going on. If there's some big change, it's going to have to come back to us. It's going to have to, because that has implications.
What do you mean by day-to-day stuff? I need to get clarification on it.
Well, in terms of if questions come up in terms of, you know, okay, we're looking at this particular proposal, we'd like to move this around a little bit, those things, and those are design things, not major designs in terms of, let's say, we're building two municipal complexes that we want, something like that. But it's just every day-to-day stuff in terms of conversations going back and forth.
Yeah, if it's a light switch, that's one thing. If it's not, you know...
We're not that, that was...
No, I understand. I'm just trying to get to what John, you know, the question is, what's a major change?
Well, but right now, there are no changes because there is no plan. I mean, this is a brand-new, this is a brand-new architect with a brand-new set of eyes on it. So there are no changes yet to be made because it hasn't been done yet. So I just, to be honest, I just have a concern that there's going to be a lot of, or as I understand what you're describing, a lot of design work that's done that doesn't get to the Select Board.
Somehow it needs to get to us, at least...
You get updates weekly, just like we do, so in terms of things that are happening that are updated reports that are coming through. I'm just, the TCVC needs to be the point of contact so that they know what's going on with all these particular things that are happening, specifically when they're meeting with the different groups, stakeholders for programming needs. We're going to be there, because we don't want them to say, okay, well, just like you said, oh, the building's fine. Well, no, we need eight thousand square feet and then the architect goes off and makes a change. We don't want those kind of things to happen because those have cost implications. So that's the kind of thing we want to forestall.
But isn't the Select Board going to be, other than the voters, I get that ultimately it's the voters, but isn't it the Select Board that's going to be the final decision-maker as to, you know, what the buildings look like, what the sizes are, I mean, the basics of it?
When we get to that particular point, there's going to be two concepts that are going to be presented to us.
Right. I don't know how to, so I guess, I don't know how this is going to work. I guess maybe we're just going to have to see how it works.
John?
Reading from the RFP, page two. Comes immediately after a list of what's to be done. All such work shall be done under the direction of the TCVC with Select Board, staff, and public input. I think in our talking, we're concerned particularly about two things. One was making sure that the architect never gets direction from two different sources. And also making sure, related to that, making sure that the TCVC knows the information that's going to the architect. We have already, in our meetings, struggled a little bit with stakeholders that would like to institute scope creep. And we've had to push back to, no, that's not the plan, that is not what we were given. The size was this, it was not this larger size. And so we want to make sure that anytime the architect is talking to library trustees, historical society, anybody else, that we're there so that we know what that information is and what the implications are, and that we're not letting the architect go off and design something that gets bigger and bigger.
Well, I think that, you know, this is, there's nothing new about this. It's a project that has to be managed. And we have a budget set aside for the cost of the architectural completion to get the design done, et cetera, et cetera. And so initially, I'm looking for, just to make sure we stay within budget. And that the actual cost of work performed versus the budgeted cost of work performed kind of stays within certain parameters. And then certainly periodically, we would get some kind of feedback from the TCVC about changes, and I'll say major changes, whatever we define that as, that are being made to the basic design that in turn are going to impact the fees, the price of getting all of the design done. So, I mean, that's what I'm...
We've got a set price for that.
The cost of the project has a set price, so absent some remarkable, oh, my gosh, now we want you to do this, that shouldn't be the issue, I guess I...
That's fine, but when you move into the project of shoveling dirt...
Well, that's a whole separate, that's a whole separate...
Really good theory.
I guess I...
That's the miracle.
And I understand your point that there are going to be bi-weekly reports that the Select Board's going to receive, but it just feels to me, and if this is what the Select Board's comfortable with, then that's fine, this is what you're comfortable with, but...
Julie, do you have a recommendation?
Well, that the, I just...
Say it.
That the TCVC, I just want to make sure that the Select Board is aware of what's going on and that there aren't decisions being made that might be contrary to what the Select Board wants. That's my only issue.
You'll get weekly or bi-weekly updates from the design firm. You can read our minutes. We're very prompt in terms of doing our minutes, so if the board sees something that we're doing that they're comfortable with, face it.
Well, that's exactly what I...
And the thing is, if you don't trust it to do this, then what's your problem? I don't know. That's the thing. You know, we're not going to go off and do something outlandish. We've walked the project this far.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's an issue of trust. Scott, I think it's simply an issue of good project management. I mean, at the end of the day, the board is responsible. So all I'm looking is to be able to take the pulse and know that everything's going well.
Patricia Jenkins, also on the TCVC. I think we're kind of going in two directions here. The TCVC's charge is to let the town know, really, what is, what's happening. In other words, it's our charge to know where the architect is, where we are, and if we're not involved in that way where we're at these meetings and we are the contact between them, we feel we're going to lose some of that. So it's not usurping, it's making sure that we have all of the information so that when it's time to tell the town, to give a program, to all of that sort of thing, we are involved. So it's not a decision-making on where's the, where's this office going to be, for instance. It's knowing right from the beginning and being the conduit between the architect, the selectmen, the town, so that we have it all under our...
I fully agree.
And so by having, by having a representative that the architect reports to or talks to, that's why we want it.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, as long as we get, you know, reports on a regular basis that we can read and understand.
Well, I don't know about the understand part because they're coming from the design firm, so as long as they're architectural.
Well, I don't think anything else. As long as we don't get any big surprises, we're okay.
Well, I could depict the color of the buildings.
Okay. As long as they match what's there already, you're okay. It's like Henry Ford, you have any color you want, I'll teach you on it, as long as it's black, so...
Might I make a suggestion as far as the minutes go? That they be a little more detailed and maybe record votes or decisions and stuff like that?
We do that.
Did they show up on the minutes?
They're a little vague sometimes.
I'm taking minutes plus running the meeting.
I know.
So if you'd like to come to our meeting to take better minutes...
I know it's difficult to do vote, but if they want to get, you know, if they want to see what's, you mentioned the minutes, so I thought I'd just...
The votes should be listed there, so when we take a vote, they're listed there, so where are our...
Circling back to the agreement itself, so it doesn't sound like there's any changes or issues with the actual agreement?
The typo on page one, under the obuset, it says, as storage, you had it circled in the...
I thought it was page two.
Maybe it's page two. It says as storage, in the orange little...
Yeah, he's already changed that.
Okay. And as long as the thing is in there for Kathleen Porter, that's a big thing for us, that we need her services, so...
Well, they've assured me that she's going to be working on the project, so...
Excellent.
Well, I think it's reflected in the minutes, our concern at this point. We just don't want to lose control of this situation.
Well, we report to you. Ultimately, we're subject to whatever you would like to do as a group, personally. If you see us doing something, hey, say, stop, stop. We're a very different kind of group. There's all kinds of different people there. We've got engineers, people who don't think they should be on the committee because they don't think they can add anything, but they actually do. So it's a, I like how it works because we picked the people in that group and they seem to be working out quite nicely as well.
Let's move on. Move to grant the town administrator authority to approve the final version of the agreement of LaValle-Brenzinger Architects and Grant. The town administrator authority has signed said final agreement. All in favor? Second? Okay.
Discussion?
Huh?
Discussion?
Discussion? Any discussion? Any more discussion? All in favor?
I have some discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Of course, the town administrator can attend any meeting she wants to, right? The TCVC is...
Yeah, the public, it's a public meeting.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Where are we?
Lee Church Property Purchase and Lot Line Adjustment. So I believe that you have seen the survey that was prepared by Mr. Landry relative to the property that we will be acquiring from the Lee Church congregation. And it's going to be going to the planning board in September for approval of the adjusted lot line. Draw your attention, oh, I don't have it in front of you, to what's called parcel A on the survey, which is a, well, it's a sliver, it's not quite a triangle, but like a triangle to the left of Town Hall. That, according to the surveyor, through the deed search, he can't definitively put it on here that it's owned by the church, so therefore we can just pick it up as part of this sale. So I spoke with our attorney about it and she's going to look into it, but she would recommend that if the board does want to make sure that we acquire this parcel, we would have to file for, to quiet title and she would need to get ahold of the church and make sure that... I already expressed the thought that I understood that the church was certainly not interested in this parcel. So I guess my question is, it's going to cost something, an attorney's fees, to obtain it, whether the board wants to do that or not. The architects seem to think that it might actually end up being important... The architects seem to think that it might actually end up being important in terms of distance, setback distances, which we are committed to following our own rules. So it may end up actually being important that this line is moved further west, so.
Well, the structure's grandfather, though, isn't it?
The str- well, yes, but, and we probably wouldn't be adding to that side, but we don't know at this point what we're going to be doing.
So you and I spoke about this before because if we don't know who owns it, how can we have an agreement with the church who we don't know?
Well, as I understand it, you have to, you petition the court and/or you try to determine whether there's anyone else who's interested in the parcel. And it would conceivably only either be the church or Mr. Bannister. But we have to go through the legal motions. We can't just take it.
We can't take it.
We can't just take it.
Can't do any kind of side letter agreement or anything like that?
My question is, what is it worth and how are we going to spend thousands of dollars to get property that you don't-
Necessarily need.
Or need?
Well, I mean, I suppose it doesn't, I mean, we could, you know, as we engage the architect, maybe that's one of the first things we talk about.
Is there a scenario under which it could become-
Right.
Significant to the-
And if it's not, I guess it just hangs out there as no man's land forever. And then the same is true of the bigger triangle.
Which is the bog.
Which is the bog. We, I don't want to speak for you, but we may not wish to expend any funds-
That's right.
Trying to claim that when we're never going to need that, so.
Because you can't do anything with it.
Right.
And currently, the current plan is not to do anything with the hobo shed, so we're not expanding it. If anything, renovating it, so it should be in place. So it should be grandfathered in terms of any kind of setback rules, so.
So it sounds like the board's not interested at this time and-
I don't want to spend time wanting to get something that we don't really have to do with it.
John?
I did review in great detail all of the surveys of the adjacent properties. The survey of Free Swallows does not claim that property. And they have a similar note to what's on this survey, which says that parcel A is land claimed by the town of Lee, believed to be a remnant of, and it's from the previous church, when the church owned a much larger piece. And I think at this point, where you're doing this legal work, you might as well just acquire this. I mean, we're not talking about tens of thousands of dollars. You don't actually have a price, know what it would cost. I don't know the legal requirements here, but I think you're talking about a quitclaim deed from the church, just saying, "We're not claiming it." And to me, it seems like because it's adjacent, because you're not certain what use it may be in the future, it makes sense to acquire it. So I would strongly urge you to pursue that, at least to find out what it really would cost to do that, instead of making the decision that, "Well, we don't see the need right now." And I think the same thing applies to the bog also. We do have a requirement, because this is in the Aquifer Protection District or Aquifer Conservation District, there's supposed to be a limit on how much of the parcel you cover with impervious surface. Right now, we're miles beyond that limit. And even if we have all of this parcel, we're still going to be above the 10% limit.
But, John, I'm confused. How do you acquire it? Who owns it? Who do you acquire it from?
Well, you petition the court for quiet title, is what it's called. You quiet the title, court gives it its blessing and then we end up with it.
Okay, I thought the statement up there, didn't it just say that it belonged to the town of Lee and that?
Well, this says, "Is claimed by the town of Lee, believed to be a remnant part of", this is the church property. And so if you go back and look at, did the church originally own that? And then when the church granted some of this current parcel to the town, did the way that the line was drawn cut that off and would give it to the town?
So what, we approach the church then and say, "Here's what we want to do"?
No, I think Julie understands that-
I mean, the church could take an interest in a piece of land all of a sudden, right? And ask money for it.
I think through the process of quiet title, that you somehow get it so that the church doesn't have a claim to it. I can certainly, I will find out in more specificity what it would cost. Go through the legal process. And perhaps almost concurrent with that, we can find out from the architect exactly how important this little parcel of land may be. All right.
I don't care. Seems to be getting more and more. Land is land. Okay. Are we on E 2009 vacation request?
I just wanted to, since I'm aware of it now, didn't want to somehow forget. And I just was looking for the board to approve my vacation for next March.
Next March?
Next March?
Next March.
You know, they change the meeting to the 14th instead.
Yeah.
The whole month of March?
Apparently, no, no. Eight working days in March.
Oh, I don't know.
I'm not sure.
What eight days?
Yeah, I'm going, the trip is booked. I didn't book it.
Is this when your daughter's getting married?
No, 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 no. It's a surprise to me as a, I guess-
She's going to be a gaucho.
They told me on my birthday, so we'll call it a birthday present.
Oh, and good steaks up there. Do we do need to make a motion for this?
You need to sign it.
Can we just approve it? Is it okay with you?
The first question I mind off is, when was town meeting? Or town-
When was it?
It's the week before. It's the week before.
And then she's got a run.
And then there's a snowstorm.
Oh, yeah, but we have rights.
No, the snowstorm will be on, oh, no, I guess it was on the election day, not deliberate, so it's a date. Today is the 13th.
13th.
Two years in a row. And they still hasn't straightened out who can cancel them.
Just you, just mayor, right?
Just wash, man.
Thank you.
You wash, man.
A couple of miscellaneous items. I am led to believe that we are approaching the completion of the swap shop.
Don't tell me the garage door showed up.
No, it's supposed to show, it's supposed to show tomorrow.
Oh, now, well, not-
He didn't call me back, so just like-
I'm not going to get excited.
So-
Shelves are done, electricity is in?
Yeah. So we're, I hesitate to call it tentatively, but tentatively trying to schedule the grand reopening. And we were looking at August 28th.
Champagne? We don't have champagne?
And they would like it at five.
August 28th? What day is the 28th?
Is it a Saturday? No, it's a Tuesday or-
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Oh, that's right, because they're open Tuesday.
Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday. It's because of Tuesday.
Well, we're going to have a ribbon cutting at the garage door. We need to do something.
Yeah. It's a-
Absolutely.
Sorry, that's September. Yes, it's a Tuesday.
Everybody will come with trailers attached. You got a file?
All right, so we will let you know if anything, if that date slips.
Hopefully, that's a firm date. We want to get a de-cry. The facing item has and has, will always be the garage door, apparently, which-
Well, you can have a garage door.
I don't need the garage door. I agree, but apparently we do.
Why? It's not like people are going to come steal the stuff, so.
I've been asking that question.
We want them to come steal it, so we don't have to put it in the-
Yeah, that's sad. Somebody might take this stuff, we hope.
And the second item is that Richard Miller, one of the trustees of Trust, has tendered his resignation. He is moving to Florida. I believe he's going to be gone as of September 7th. So according to RSA 31 something, something, the Select Board appoints a replacement for the remainder of the term. And I believe his term was going to expire this coming month. So we'll put something in the de-cry, if anybody knows of anybody who might be interested.
Absolutely.
And that's everything I have.
Really? That's it?
It really is.
So we're up to the consent agenda, first right?
What?
Motion for consent agenda. There it is, okay. Let's see. Motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. A second, please?
Second.
All in favor? Or any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Very good. I'll see how easy that one is. Here we go.
Oh, chief! Chief! He's coming, he's coming back. You know, you say chief or you go, "Chief, chief." Well, whichever one gets you back quickest. I wanted to ask you about these.
Okay.
If you can hang on just a-
Yep.
Finished with that?
Yes.
There's still a lot more. That's just it. Now, that one comes this way. That's just you.
Is this one just me?
No, it's all three.
Huh?
That was all three. Just need this way down.
What? All of this, all of this for the Lee Fair Committee? We just can't list them on a piece of paper and sign one?
No. No. Julie, we've even checked. We've triple-checked this. Turned to station like on Saturday or something. You mentioned this. No, it's here.
I've been working this side of the other before. Carpe diem.
I love Lucy doing trouble.
Yeah. Apple, marsh.
He's collecting them.
They're piled already, he said he's trying to meet.
I know, that's why I asked.
Oh, sorry.
Don't hit the files.
It gets stuck there. Look at that pity. Forgot to. I find you a good needle eye over here. It must have stuck. What goes around, comes around. Jill?
Oh, man.
What a joke.
What all this done for? How did you get down there?
Paying the bills.
Bust? Throw me a little bust on.
Well, it's moving this way, huh? I got a little injury here. I like the real cookie with the skin.
Cookies, cookies.
Cookies, I like that. Let's see. Have to check. Check. Okay. Miscellaneous unfinished business, anybody? Scott?
I'm asking the chief a question. You sent us the ratings from the racetrack this last time. So is this, so they've had one violation, this is number two, right? So that means they get one more free one and then they start to pay?
Correct.
So you're working with them to figure out what this was and...
No, we know exactly what it was. It was the big block super modifieds. We expected those numbers. You know, that's a once a year show that they do. Their high horsepower race car. So I'm not surprised, I'm actually surprised that they're as low as they are. But I was having some discussions, the, uh, there's one, the late model division, which is their premier division. Uh, I had noticed that some of the, um, car owners and the crews, they were changing the exhaust. They usually dumped out down the side. And there was this new thing, they thought they could get more horsepower coming out the back, straight out the back. And I talked to the Rens, I said, here is your problem with that. When they come out of turn two, that's when they get back on the accelerator. That pushes that exhaust right to the where the meter is. So I suggested they put a little flap and it doesn't decrease air horsepower or anything. So immediately, the Rens, they were right on it. The following week, everybody had it except for one car. And I, I pointed out to Norma and Senior, I said, hey, you know, the 53 still doesn't have that little flap on there. When he came out for practice, he went over and he said, you either put it on or load it up going. But while I was talking to, um, Joe Bassett, we were looking at the VIP area, uh, I made a suggestion that, that, that end is wide open, um, where the cars are accelerating. So very easily, they could put plywood or signage up along that fence area and that's gonna retain a lot of that noise inside the track. So that's, um, they thought by putting that where they were gonna put that, um, garage area canopy. Um, they said, you know, that should block a lot. And I said, well, no, I brought him on, it's, this is, this is where your meter is and that's where your canopy is. That's not gonna do anything for you, so let's look at something different. So they're, they're great to work with, every suggestion you make, they're, they're right on it. So that's gonna be, you know, the project moving forward. And I don't think you'll see those numbers next year.
The reason I'm asking is because there was some postings on the...
Neighborhood League.
Yeah, about sound. Are they doing something different? And then you sent this email, so I'm like, ooh.
Yeah, and I, I actually responded to that gentleman. Mr. Bookbinder. Out on 28 Tamrac. I responded to him and, and, and actually after a lot of people responded to him. And I said, you know, this was a, a special race, it happens once a year. The readings were expected. That we have the, the ordinance that we worked on, that we measure the readings every weekend. And, uh, they haven't been any, it's actually been better than last year. And he responded back, thank you very much for the information.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Now you can leave.
Better go now, we have another question.
Can I put, can I...
Sure.
One of the things that, that, you know, the TCVC is gonna be looking for, and we've had conversations about it, but the, the design firms brought it up as well in terms of what we think would pass in terms of what we're proposing. And, um, in terms of, it just, I don't wanna answer now, but think about it. In terms of, um, if we do the whole project, what amount do we think we will have a good chance of getting acceptance by the voter? And I know that's one of the things that the design firm asked us. And we don't have to answer that question. So what would the board think would be something that would be acceptable? The proposal that came from the facilities committee is 3.4 million for everything. Is it 3.4? Is it 2.8? Whatever it is, is that something that we can have a conversation about and maybe we can think about it? Because that, that will dictate in terms of what we have the design firm look at. So it's just a thought. And I know a couple of firms asked that question, but we've had a brester specifically ask that as well, I believe, so.
Well, I, I have an initial reaction to it.
All right.
And my initial reaction is 2.9. And I'll tell you why. I'll tell you why it's 2.9. That $3 million figure has been hanging over every project you talk about. Well, it's the library, $3 million project. That number is the first number that comes in, I think, to everybody's head, is that $3 million library. So to me, it's, it's 2.995 or something like that, but...
Because the, the thought isn't, one of the things that, this is just me, this is not that TCVC is thinking about. In terms of, do we go in for the whole thing? Do we go in, we've talked about doing partials. And the thing is, for me, do you give them just one choice? And then maybe if it doesn't pass, come back next year and we have something different? But you have to kind of gauge in terms of what is the voter interested in doing? We've heard people say, well, they voted for the sunny money, so they're interested in the project, the whole thing. Well, that doesn't apply to anybody.
It doesn't.
And 60% is hard to get. One of the things, I don't remember which firm, was one firm was very impressed that we even got the design money. Many towns are not even getting that. So it's, maybe that's something that the board can kind of give the TCVC some guidance in terms of what they're thinking in terms of...
But what do you have, what, I haven't seen anything out of plan as far as taking it to the public. I mean, I, I'd be perfectly willing to stand up and say, look, here's, here's, you know, and not only just me, but the board in various places or all in one place or whatever, going out there and actively, you know, selling it and marketing it.
Well, we're not supposed to advocate for, we're supposed to prevent.
I, I understand, but, you know, we don't have to pick the price, but we can certainly say, here's why, here's why we're, we're doing this. And the fact is, there's costs involved in not doing it that are unknown to a, to a great extent.
Well, I think just we need some kind of guidance, so when we start having these meetings with the design firm in terms of what they're thinking about, they're gonna ask us, well, how hard is this 3.4? Is that what you're looking for? Or is it less? Is it more? And I think part of it is, there's that magic happy place. I don't know what the happy place is.
Do we have any feel for what the, what the, what the school?
Middle school?
Middle school is gonna be asking for? I mean, I think that's gonna have a big influence on, on, on how this, how this goes is what the... Especially with the bond issue is gonna be.
Well, it's year after next.
Year after next.
Because the committee proposed something, it's the board's accepted the report. So they're gonna be going out there. But their, their intention is to have the bonds not overlap. So when the high school gets paid off, that's when they want the other one to start.
Okay.
So they've got a couple of years, I believe. But that's not gonna be cheap. We're probably...
No, I know, it's expensive.
We're talking probably 50 million.
Yeah.
Uh, because the plan is to renovate, uh, not renovate, build a new, um, facility on the current site. And when that's done, tear down the old site. They're gonna have some problems with Durham because Durham, some people are not going to want to tear down, especially the, the main building.
That's right.
From the 19, whatever it is.
Historical value there.
Yeah, so, which cuts into the amount of space they can have on that particular site. So they've got some issues. But it is not gonna be cheap.
No, I understand. I'm just saying, there's a whole bunch of things going on that are gonna impact the way people feel about their...
Well, it depends on how wealthy, how wealthy they're, they're feeling, but, you know, things get more expensive each year. And the thing is, we have to be conscious of the fact that it's an expensive project. And we need to do something. Uh, TCVC is going through and, uh, I don't wanna call it the devil's advocate, but, you know, people's concerns and having answers to those particular things. So that's one of our tasks, or one of the things that we're doing.
Do we have something to pass out at the fair that has, uh...
We're working on that at the moment. We've got some displays and then we've got a subcommittee working on those particular things. But it's, it's a tremendous job. We did a very nice job, I think, getting this passed. So this phase is getting even harder than that.
Yeah.
So...
Excuse me though, I'm going through this several times now, that the people react more to understanding, you know, which the rate change is gonna be for my taxes. The number, 3 million to 3.2, it just sounds like something. But if you say, I've got a $300,000 house, this is the expected raise and it's run over so many years. Uh, it's kinda nice when, um, the chairman of the planning board and the, you know, the committee comes up and actually lays out their grid and saying, here's what we're gonna do over the next 20 years. And if we spend 3 million, there's a purple instead of orange, and this is what you're gonna see. I mean, that's kind of, sells a little bit easier.
Ben's done a nice graph in terms of matching up the current obligations we have, the bonds.
Yes.
Okay, good. There's a period of overlap?
Yes.
And then they start to go down, of course, going down. But, you know, um, it's just how it gets presented. And there are gonna be people who are definitely...
Yeah, I know, they just don't hear.
There's people on board now that are, give me the whole thing, I wanna pay for it, let's get done with it. Those are small groups. It's the people in the middle. And many times, and you guys have experienced, at least Mr. Brown's experience, people have no clue. No clue any of this is going on.
Absolutely not.
So that's part of our challenge as well, to get that information out to people, not advocating both for or against it. But here is the information, you need to decide, you know, if this something that's worthwhile, so... The other thing I have, which is, I'm not looking for a decision, think about it. The ABC is starting up, so usually we ask for some kind of guidance from this particular group in terms of increases, decreases, or stay the same budgets. But maybe we can, we think about that in the next meeting, we can maybe make a conversation, have a conversation.
And I, sorry, actually send it out to, send it?
Scent?
Sent out today, uh, the fiscal '20 budget worksheet to department heads and the committees that present a budget. So they all now have that with a due date of September 14th.
Uh, to the nonprofits too?
Uh, that's coming, that's going tomorrow.
Okay. Can I ask one question in terms of a comment that was made about the oil bid?
Yes.
So...
It's not. I have not forgotten about it. It is on my list of things to do, as you know. We put it out to bid as we normally do and things happen and I just haven't cycled back to it. I don't know whether the board wants to take any of his recommendations or just put it out segregating within the bid, the town, if we decide to do something different from what the other two are doing, so...
When can you get it out?
I'll just, I'll just drop everything else and do it this week.
I mean, I don't know, is it, what is it? What's the rush? That's what I'm trying to understand. It's just something we wanna get done, I understand that.
Yeah, we typically do it, um, in conjunction with the fiscal year. But the, the prices and the agreements that we have are just stay in place and...
Have we always done for the three entities to...
Always since I've been here.
I, I would rather have us not going alone because the biggest user or the biggest is the school. And we can bring it back onto them. But I would rather us attain the, the initiative to do the bid, not let somebody else do it for us.
Right.
Do it alone.
Uh, uh, fully agree.
So I would say as soon as you can do it.
Yep.
I, don't drop everything, but drop a couple of things.
Drop a couple of things, yeah. Yeah, no, I, I'm not an advocate of, uh, the town needs to be the one that is used to bid. Okay.
Um, speaking of budget and budget process, has there been any movement to have an initial meeting of the ABC?
Yes, I have to send, well, something will be sent out.
Okay.
Something will be sent out?
The chair is supposed to do it, but...
Does the ABC, do we have members? I mean, does, is it the same ones as, uh? No, they've changed.
No, it changed.
Yeah, some of them new.
Oh, okay, I just wondered, yeah. Yeah, it's a different group.
Now, the plan is that, um, uh, I need to send something out this week. And we'll set up an initial meeting. Oh, that was the other thing. And I don't know. Good for a decision night. What meeting, what meeting night works good for this group? Is it still the Wednesdays or I don't...
Is it Wednesdays? Budget meetings? I think it was.
Well, be that as it may, think about what days would work best for this particular group. Not looking for a decision night, another thing to think about. So you got homework!
Oh, my gosh. If you don't write this down, I'm gonna forget it all.
Can the town minister send out a reminder to the board that they need to be thinking about project costs for the TCVC? Meeting night for the ABC? Uh, what was the other thing? There was something else.
Budget, up, down for next year.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the budget guidelines.
Yeah, budget guidelines.
Thank you for the young lady in the back.
No.
Oh, queen, the queen, party queen. So was that unexpected, I assume?
Shocked.
So I expect...
Finally have a tiara.
Every, every time I come to your office, I expect you to wear it. I'm not sure you attach it though. I don't, is it like bobby pins?
Oh, I'll bobby better.
Okay, all right, all right.
Newspaper clips.
Yeah, I'll wear that tomorrow.
Oh, jeez. I assume that will be in the e-cryer for this week?
Oh, boy.
Spread it around.
Oh, boy.
Are we good?
I can see all the building people coming in and like bowing to you or whatever, so...
Actually, Karen, could you come up here? I have some questions that you can just answer the board.
Sure.
Just update us, you told us one time the property next to, um, Dr. Donors or something?
So a little, a gentleman bought the little house. He lives in Massachusetts and he's gonna have a hot dog stand there. But he isn't going to go through the approval process until this fall and open up in the spring.
Is he gonna rip the house down?
He is gonna tear the house down. He's gonna keep the shed in the back.
And he's gonna put on a hot dog stand?
Yeah. Like a pushcart. So he has to get all his approvals for that.
Yeah, I love hot dogs.
He's gonna open on the weekends for now, well, in the spring and then go, he's eventually like to be full-time up there.
And then the property in the circle, they used to sell the Christmas trees and things?
The gentleman who had it on, he sold the Christmas trees there, he defaulted on his mortgage. So the original person who owned it, Ronald Lee and Associates, took it back. So now it's just vacant.
But the stuff that's there?
Is under lock and key and nobody could get at it.
Okay. And the, the guy, what, what about the building that's been empty for?
Nick and Herb's.
How long now?
So Chief Johnsfield's, oh, ye, next to Friendly Pets. That's a furniture store opening September 15th.
So they are gonna allocate by it and, because there was, somebody went in there temporarily to...
They went in there temporarily, yeah, with illegal signs and then they were contacted, took them down. And they're in Rochester as well.
Yeah.
So this is gonna be, I think it's September 15th, they're opening the furniture store here. Yep, that's been sold.
In the Nick and Herb's there?
Nick and Herb's has been vacant. Chief Johnsfield spoke with the owner of it about two months ago because there were some issues there with the gang moving in and... Just what reduced his price, just a step or so.
City was gonna do something, then I don't think he's done anything.
Nothing.
Anything with the potential development back of the herbivore?
Yes, it's all approved of the planning board and it's be out to bid right now for the construction of the earthwork.
And what are they putting in?
Um, they don't have any test, tenement.
Tenements?
Yet. But they have a 30,000 square foot building and two smaller buildings. But there's no tenants yet.
And it all depends on how water coming, if it's a restaurant or not, right?
No, it depends on if they can get a tenant for a restaurant.
Oh. But they need the water though to have a restaurant though, don't they?
No, on that site, no, they need the tenants. Water is a big driving force for that because of fire protection. But not for tenants.
Anything? Anything with the water line going to the circle?
Um, last week, there, it's in the design phase.
We knew it's in the design phase and we had circulated the draft new agreement and...
So maybe next spring?
They're supposed to bid it this fall to construct it in the spring. He told the, supposedly the man at the state told the developer just the other day that April they're gonna start building it. But we haven't been officially told that yet. Last we were told was bid in the fall because you get a better price in the fall to construct in the spring.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for asking.
Well, I just want you to get, since he heard, it's easier to tell me just to...
Karen, you're really disinterested.
Okay, cool. Anymore? Listen to a germ, make a motion to a germ.
Okay.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you.